Clemens Street, Article 8, Clemens Street Waterline Extension. Do we have a motion?
I move that the town approve Article 8 as set out in the warrant.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. This item requires a two-thirds vote. It was voted on by the select board, five yes and zero no. And I believe that Mr. Rick LaFonte has a few words on this one.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, very briefly. The town is under consent order with DEP to install public water down in this area, multiple streets down on the street area. And it's a result of some contamination from the old North Carver landfill that has compromised some private drinking water wells. The amount that you have in front of you at $500,000 includes three pieces. One is the amount that the town received the low bid for the project. The second part are the curb stops to the 19 homes that are impacted where they're being tested continuously. And the other piece, about $150,000, is for the town to pay for the hookups as well as -- thank you -- decommissioning of the private wells. So this is an all-in-one project, the funding to basically draw us to a close. The consent order apparently requires that by April 30th, that the town must award the bid subject to appropriation. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule here, but at this point, this is the appropriation we seek of half a million dollars that would allow us to inform DEP that we're on schedule. We can then award the bid to the lowest bidder, which is $353,000. And then the project must begin by May 30th and be completed by November 30th, 2021. So this is -- I know projects go out there a little bit, but this will fund and relieve the town's obligation and liability here.
Do you miss Rick LaFonte? We'll open it for discussion and debate now. Mr. Shea?
We've been through this before. A couple of years ago when we previously funded this project, but I motion that the words "no betterments shall be charged" and "no hookup fees shall be charged..."
Is this an amendment to the --
Yes, please.
-- I need it in writing first?
I have it. Oh, you need it.
Yeah, can you present it?
I have to read it.
Yeah, after you present it to us, we'll give you any feedback that we need to let you know whether or not it needs any tweaking, and then you can go ahead and read it.
Thank you very much.
And I will say that that is the intent, is that there will not be betterments or hookup fees as part of the town's appropriation we're seeking.
Excellent. My motion would be, I motion too, add the words "no betterment shall be charged" and[206.45][206.45]"no hookup fee shall be charged" for any property found to be contaminated now or in the future.
So I'm just going to reread this. This is an amendment to the main motion, that "no betterment shall be charged," "no hookup fees shall be charged" to any property found to be contaminated, nor now or in the future. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? The motion has been made. Do we have a second? All right, motion has been made and seconded. We'll now open the amendment for discussion and debate.
Mary Dharma, 162 Clemens Street. I would like clarification on what streets that they're planning to bring the water main down?
Okay, so right now, we're talking about the amendment to the main motion. So this would be on Mr. Shea's amendment on betterments and hookup fees.
May I quickly, Mr. Moderator? The administrative consent order with the town, with the state specifies 19 particular locations. So I think the language of "now into the future," I think that opens the town up more broadly than an administrative consent order does. The administrative consent order addresses 19 properties that are being tested right now. And I think, I'm not sure if that was the intent of the speaker, but to suggest that the town's liability will go beyond 19 indefinitely into the future, I don't think that's in the town's interest.
Just to clarify, it's only on this existing project? Whether, if you have to expand the line, that would be another issue. It's just in regards to this project.
Then, Mr. Shea, I think you should be specific and say for these 19 properties?
Okay. Well, we're funding, out of this funding, we're funding these 19 properties. So would you -- what would I have to do to restrict it to these 19 properties? Because frankly, I just felt that we were funding a specific portion of water line, and this is in regards to that specific portion of water line currently as it stands.
Maybe Mr. Corvo?
Hold on, we have 120 orders with Town Council?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. My point of order really was that, to the extent that this is relating to any property found to be contaminated now or in the future, it is likely beyond the scope of what was in the warrant article. However, if Mr. Shea wants to, I guess, self amend his motion to make it specifically limited to the 19 properties that are the subject of the current project, then I think that...
I will so specifically amend it to, just be specifically for what we're voting on, on these 19 projects.
So, Mr. Shea, would your motion be "no betterment shall be charged" and "no hookup fee will be charged" to any of the 19 properties that are part of the current project?
Part of this current funding, yes, correct.
So we're going to just take that as your original motion?
Thank you. And it's Shea?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
It's hard to hear people with the mask on all the time.
Okay, so on the amendment, we're still on the amendment. We're going to continue debate and discussion on the amendment.
I have an issue with "in the future."
I think we just took that out.
I didn't hear him say that. If we remove "in the future"...
So through you, Mr. Moderator, the motion to amend is now to add the words "no betterment shall be charged" and "no hookup fee will be charged" to any of the 19 properties that are part of the current project?
For contamination that are, in regards to -- if the property isn't contaminated and people want to hook up to it, I think that's a personal decision. It's in regards to contamination, and if the contamination is coming from the landfill, which is a town-owned property, then the property owner should not be subject to fees on top of that.
May I?
Uh, a moment.
I don't think that's what is intended. I think that it's...
Well, currently, there's only three properties under consent order. If next year, it's found that two more properties have to be hooked up to the water line, that shouldn't be unduly burdened to the property owner.
Mr. Jermaine, you have some comments?
I absolutely agree. I think that when we had sat down and worked out the numbers for this project of $500,000, this was every single house, this was all 19 houses. If one of those 19 houses do not want to hook up to the water line, they have that option. There is a caveat to this. If they hook up to the water line, their well has to be decommissioned. So they can't have it both ways. They can't have the well water and the town water. They have to decide that. There may be some residents that don't want a water bill, but there absolutely should be no betterment charge, no connection fee, everything. This water line should have been done 20 years ago. So that's just my estimation. I think that we need to, if the word "future" is gone, I think we need to plan on all 19. And I think that there should be a window. You know, it shouldn't be they could hook up to it five years from now if all of a sudden four and a half years from now, the water line they didn't want four and a half years ago, now their wells are contaminated and connecting it for free. I think there should be a window with that.
Window within the level of contamination as far as that goes out. For instance, and I'll use myself as an example, I'm one of those 19 properties. I have no intention of hooking up to the water line. Two years ago, I spent $15,000 dumping a deep well. It goes over 500 feet deep. It was a very expensive project. Now, I have no intention of hooking up to this, but if five years from now, I find the contamination from the dump is in my water supply, there should be no reason that I am forced to hook up to town water at my own cost. That was the point of my amendment and motion, that no betterment fees in relation to this project should be charged, nor any fees in the future now for any properties contaminated now or in the future in regards to these specific houses. If contamination shows up, it wasn't your fault, it wasn't my fault, it was the town as a whole. I shouldn't be unduly burdened, nor should anybody else who has contaminated water and all of a sudden has to pay a water bill out of their own pockets. We didn't do this. I wasn't dumping antifreeze and used oil in my yard. I wasn't contaminating my well. This is a larger social issue. If 10 years down the line from now, there's some sort of breakage or outage because it's happened before, the filtration system broke down, that was never fixed, and then we found that the contamination had spread. Now, that wasn't my fault, nor am I particularly at risk for this. Frankly, if you're not contaminated now, and you want to hook up because you like the town of Carver water better, that should be at your own cost. Only the houses that are currently or in the future contaminated by this are the ones that should be, the town should be picking up the cost for.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Okay. The question of scope comes up here with the additional details being added. So the issue here is with town meeting making decisions for 10 years down the road from now, and for us sort of tying the water commissioners' hands is not really within the scope of this particular article. So I'm going to have to rule that part of it out of order.
I would be very upset because this article was, these wording, this article was accepted at the previous meeting where we approved this. You're stepping over your bounds. I'm limiting this to 19 properties. Now, Mr. Jermaine is telling me they've already figured out the cost for these 19 properties. Well, I'm telling you that I'm not getting on it. I already paid an extensive amount to make sure I have my own water supply. And if my own water supply is contaminated, then by the town, then at that point in the future, it should be picked up. It shouldn't be on me because you contaminated my water. This isn't Flint Mission, is it? This is Carver. The town approved an unlined dump in this town, knew there would be issues, and then when the state offered remediation possibilities, we put a solar panel project on top of it, which made it fiscally irresponsible to go back and remediate the problem. I didn't do that. I didn't vote for it. I am limiting this motion to the scope of what we're funding today, and that's 19 houses. And as far as I'm concerned, only three of them are under consent order by the DEP. Everybody else is voluntary, and that's how it should be worked. I understand that when you're budgeting for the project, you have to include all of it. But I can assure you, out of those 19 homes that you'll be lining up in front of, I would be very surprised indeed if people are going to be lining up to sign up for a water bill. So I would argue that I'm limiting this amendment to the scope of this article, which is 19 houses. It is the water line extension from the North Carver Green to roughly the Pine City. That is the limit of this. If you want to change the words to my amendment, I fully support that.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Ellen Mayden, 148A, Clemens Street. Hold on one second, sir. So after consulting with legal counsel, there are legal ramifications to this, and I want you guys to hear it from him so that you can hear what his concerns are, and then we'll proceed from there, okay?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. I am concerned about the legal ramifications of a vote and what it may or may not expose the town to going forward in the future. The voters have been given notice that there would be an appropriation to fund the construction of the water line, and town officials have indicated that as part of that project, they are willing to fund hooking up the individual properties to that line, and that's certainly within their authority to do. However, the decision of whether or not to waive certain fees with respect to connections as well as user fees is something that rests by statute in the board of water commissioners and is set forth in their regulations. And under the doctrine of separation of powers, town meeting does not have the authority to dictate to the water commission that in the future, they will be required to waive fees or to continue waiving fees on an indefinite basis. That's not, in my opinion, what this article was intending to do, nor is it my opinion that this article has the legal authority to bind the water commission indefinitely in some sort of agreement to waive user fees. And so it's my opinion that, you know, while the commissioners can of their own volition decide to waive these fees, and it's my understanding that they're willing to do that if the connections are made now, it's my opinion that town meeting does not have the authority to bind them in the future.
Thank you, sir. So here's what I'm inclined to do. You guys have heard the motion, you heard the amendment to the motion, you've heard Mr. Shea's position on this, you've heard legal advice from Mr. Corvo. I'll allow it to continue and take a vote on it, but everyone should be aware of what Mr. Corvo just discussed with you, which means that it could open the town up to the future litigation. So there could be some concern over, you know, whether or not what we did today is actually binding. And so I'm inclined to leave that decision to town meeting, to say, hey, we want to roll the dice, and we want to, we want to, you know, take that chance later on down the road, that we could open ourselves to litigation, and what we do here today may not be binding. But I'll leave it up to you guys, because this is obviously a very contentious matter. I see both sides of it. I see protecting the town from future litigation, and I also see that we have homeowners who cannot predict the future with regards to the safety of their drinking water. We don't want to make the same mistakes that other cities and towns in the country have done environmentally. So with that in mind, like I said, I'll let it continue, and we can have some further discussions on the amendment, and then go ahead and vote on it with legal advice clearly noted. So I believe I have this gentleman over here on the right to speak on the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ellen Mayden, 148A, Clemens Street. After all those delays, would you recap and repeat Mr. Shea's motion as it's been massaged?
Yes, sir. I believe Mr. Corvo has a best copy of it.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. The motion to amend to add the words "no betterment shall be charged" and "no hookup fee will be charged" to any of the 19 properties that are part of the current project.
Okay. I was a bit surprised.
That was my amendment. It was "no hookup fee will be charged" for any property found to be contaminated. Which I do believe is not the nature of the thing that he requires the town to do.
Mr. Moderator, please use the microphone, please.
Yeah, Mr. Shea, we have to have you use the microphone just so everybody can hear, I'm sorry.
My motion was specific to only contaminated properties, and it was in regards to the specific funding of this particular project. Now, I can see Mr. Corvo's point, but we're already paying, expecting, we're already voting to fund all of these properties to be done. So aren't we already accepting that fiscal responsibility as it is right now?
Yeah, I believe that the issue is that things could change later on down the road. Those amounts could change, but the ability of the water commission to fund that could change.
If it's necessary, I will amend my motion to one last time, and that is "no betterment shall be charged" to these properties because, well, they have the opportunity for hookup fees. Yes. And... So the good angel over my shoulder. Upon installation or during the process, prior to beginning this project, the properties that wish to hook up to it should not be charged. And it's specific to this project, I mean, sorry, should not be charged hookup fees. Specific to this project, it takes now and the future out of it.
Okay, it's getting a little hard to unravel everything that you're saying, so I'm going to need you to write it down specifically, present it, and then we will read it.
Winner of order?
Yes, sir.
This entire motion now becomes moot. There is not going to be a betterment charge. We're going to pay for the decommissioning of the well to hook up. Is this redundant language? It's not necessary.
Well, that language is not in the motion, the main motion. Unless by default, that's part of something else that's not listed here.
no betterment shall be charged to these properties, because, well, they have the opportunity for hookup fees. Yes. And... So the good angel over my shoulder. Upon installation or during the process of, prior to beginning this project, the properties that wish to hook up to it should not be, that wish to hook up to it should not be charged. And it's specific to this project, I mean, sorry, should not be charged hookup fees. Specific to this project, it takes now and the future out of it.
Okay, it's getting a little hard to unravel everything that you're saying, so I'm going to need you to write it down specifically, present it, and then we will read it.
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
This entire motion now becomes moot. There is not going to be a betterment charge. We're going to pay for the decommissioning of the wells that go to the hookup. Is this redundant language? It's not necessary.
Well, that language is not in the motion, the main motion. Unless by default, that's part of something else that's not listed here.
Mr. Moderator, in sidebar, you guys should be open to the public debate that was being discussed.
My point is, if you want to sign up for it, and the town's willing to pay for it, fine. Personally, I think the town should be paying for the contaminated ones. If you want to sign up, it's that your decision. But I do believe that it's very important to include the words "no betterments" and "no hookup fees" for the contaminated properties.
So the issue at this point that we've been discussing is, so the amendment says "no betterment shall be charged, no hookup fees shall be charged to any property prior to construction of the water line." And we're just, they're trying to help you out, Mr. Shea, with this one, because prior to construction of the water line, hookup fees typically aren't charged.
Right, but typically...
So, hold on one second, I have the floor. So what we're recommending, and what we discussed when you were up here, is you could wrap the parameter on this to say, "no hookup fees shall be charged to any property who hooks up before the end of the year," considering the fact that the project is supposed to be completed by the end of the year. So if you...
And that would be, yes, so that would be fine to amend it now. I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right, so we've edited it, edited it, and Mr. Corvo has the best language, I believe, so I'm going to have him read it.
Okay, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Shea to confirm that this is his motion. "No betterments shall be charged and no hookup fee will be charged to any of the 19 properties that connect to the new water line prior to the end of calendar year 2021."
That, that's fine with me, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, an amendment to the main motion, as it made and seconded. I'm going to open the amendment that you just heard up for debate. Mr. Bellman?
Yeah, I made that same amendment a couple of years ago.
Okay, we got a point of order, hold on.
I have the floor.
Okay. You, you did cede to Mr. Shea, so I wasn't sure, so let's go ahead.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, yes. Mr. Bellman, may I? Overhead, please. Much appreciated. I'm actually, maybe correct on my thoughts for a second. I've been, it's not, I don't think you're icing the kicker here, but I've been standing here for quite a while. My question perhaps is moot at this point, but I would still like to have an answer. And that is, it was asserted that, in that regard, this might not be in order because it would bind the water commission in the future. Is that correct? So it was asserted?
That, that was the legal advice that you're seeking, yes.
As I understand it, what we're voting on tonight, the town, its governing body, the town meeting, is voting to bind the water commission to do something with that money to carry through on the construction swap line. And what this amendment is about is, can it be codifying, putting on paper what exactly Mr. Germain has asserted, that the intention is to do this. So as long as everybody's clear on that, I'm just curious why it would be a point even of concern.
I, I would believe that question would be for Mr. Shea. So I believe that...
No, no, I'm sorry, may I? Why would it be a point of concern that the amendment would be somehow satisfactory because it would be binding the North Carolina Water Commissioners, but the, it's amending a piece of, I know what Tommy tomorrow, it's already committing them to a course of action.
So you're, you're concerned, is you're concerned that we're, that we're binding their hands, or you're, or you're saying we should not be concerned?
No, I'm asking what the logic is that the town meeting is authorized, is competent to vote on this expenditure and be taking this action, not to set a condition on it.
At, at this point, we're not, we're not including the words "into the future," we're just saying to the end of 2021, which is, according to Mr. Germain and others, what the intent was from the start, so we're probably just overstating the obvious, but Mr. Shea is well within his rights to, to put that in, in writing, and just make sure folks are clear on it. That's the way I see it.
All right. I, I wanted to make sure, because the, when I first stood up, my intention, the first thing I asked was if we could actually find out what Mr. Shea's exact motion actually was, also to O'Shea, at, at that exact moment. And, and again, if it was modified, I think the question I have would be Germain, but at this point, it's not.
Yep, I appreciate that, thank you. Mr. Bellman?
All right, I made that same motion a couple of years ago, and I'm still a believer of it, as I did with the second. The intent with the board's alignment was to go ahead and pay for all 19 hookups this year. That was the intent, with no fees at all to the residents. Okay? If you don't hook up this year, there's going to be a curb stop at the end of your property for the future if you're going to hook up, but I don't think personally that the town should be beholden to you whenever you want to do it, where every year it costs more and more and more money to hook up. So this is your option, hook up now. If not in the future, you want to hook up, it's on you to pay for that.
Yeah, just as a reminder, the future's no longer on the table, so...
I understand that, but I just want to make sure that people understood where we were coming from in us looking at this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On the right?
Mike, Paul Mary, 164, Bloom Street. I don't know, Mr. Moderator, from what I've got to say is to what Mr. Shea said. I have not heard DEP, what they say about when there's a, no better way to put it, drop dead date that people have to be hooked up, these 19 properties. If this could magically go away at the end of this year, haven't heard a thing. And contrary to what people might think, myself and other people have the ability to call DEP and find out, because usually when I talk to them, not always, but often, I hear something completely different. Over the last four years, this thing has been batted around. So I understand, in principle, I agree with what the town is doing and wants to do, but I would be checking with DEP if they're okay with this drop dead date, because we are under the consent order, and if they waived that and said, yep, at the end of this year, you're done. Just my thoughts on Mr. Shea's opinion about in the future.
Thank you, sir. Again, the future's no longer on the table except for to the end of 2021, so is there any indication that the DEP would not honor this to the end of 2021?
I share Mr. Palmary's frustration in terms of getting solid, clear answers on the subject.
Okay, so we, no answer to that. Do you have a point of order?
No, I just have a, we asked the...
Hold on, okay, so if you're speaking in debate, we've got to let some other people go first.
Go along with Mr....
You got someone, so it's in response to the last person?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
We asked DEP to come here and to help with us, and they were unable to send somebody, but we don't know what DEP will do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bellman. On the right?
Naomi Zorro, 162, Bloom Street. I think that we need to take into consideration that the DEP is requiring us to, well, the town, to test for emerging contaminants like PFAS and stuff, and if that shows up at the landfill, that, that might extend it beyond, because I understand that it's not going to happen before October.
Anybody want to speak on that to confirm, or moderate, if that's... Moderator?
I think that the DEP has said that towns within a certain number don't have to test for that until October and after. If I remember correctly, when I read that article, that's what they had said.
Well, when I spoke with them, they said that there were three testing periods, January, April, and October.
Okay, and it goes, it goes by how many people are in union, how?
Okay, well, then that's cutting it kind of close.
Okay, you guys can't, can't converse back and forth. So we've had a statement, we've had a belief in terms of what may be the policy. We don't know that for sure. I don't think we're going to solve that tonight, so we're going to have to go with the information that we have. All right? All right. Seeing no further motion to the mics and no raised hands. Yes, sir?
I hesitate to go any further. I do wish to ask, given the uncertainty with regard to dates that's been expressed here, elsewhere, or on the floor, what is the opinion of the town council? If this project is not completed, I mean, 2021, does this provision, amendment, if adopted, become null and void?
I believe there's questions to legal data in the first place, but I'm not sure about the date.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I, you know, I continue to have serious concerns with this amendment. You know, the, the town, the issue that's in front of the town is whether or not to appropriate the funds to do the work. And that appropriation includes the cost of constructing and installing individual service connections. Town officials have indicated that they do not intend to assess a betterment, which they couldn't do without town meeting approval anyway, and that they intend to waive connection fees. I am concerned about having town meeting putting conditions on that appropriation when this is a highly regulated subject. It's a subject that is within the jurisdiction of an entity of the town that has its own statutory authority, as well as the jurisdiction of the DEP. In my opinion, you know, we have to respect the separation of powers. The town is, the town meeting is the legislative body that is in charge of making the appropriation of funds, which is what we originally asked that we do. My recommendation, and voters can take it or not, is that the details of this be left to the executive branch, as is their authority to carry out the command of town meeting, which is the appropriation of funds to build the water line and connect the individual properties. And, and I cannot say what the effect of this additional language would be if it passes, but, you know, there, there is risk that if you add additional conditions to this language, that, that DEP may take an action that is not favorable to the town, or that it may expose the town to future liabilities that we're not anticipating at this time.
I think, given the importance of the subject at hand, on the matter at hand, and also the check in past, which happens with dates being missed, and orders being ignored, and plants being deactivated, and testing not occurring, that I don't think Mr., I'm going to recall him forever now, Mr. Shea's intention here is unclear. I think his intention is crystal clear, whether he's been able to formulate it in such words that satisfy all the stakeholders. I guess my concern simply is, if this is what is intended, if the town intends to do what Mr. Shea has asked, and articulately means that, is there a better way to get that into articulately as passed, if it's passed? I, I think Mr. Shea would gladly withdraw his, his motion. I don't speak for him, but I would not have an objection if there was a way to guarantee that.
Point of order, doesn't it say that in the wording?
You point that out for us, Mr. Germain.
Is he staying overnight here tonight? It says in the wording here, "construction and installation of individual service connections," individual service connections, and anything incidental or related thereto. Seems to me it gets you more than a start at the driveway. The intent was to hook up every house that wanted to get hooked up. There was never a discussion of a betterment charge, there was never a discussion of a connection charge, ever, 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 ever. But it can't be forward, because that's not our authority.
Mr. Moderator, I've lived in this town probably as long as some people, and I've come to town meeting since I've lived here. I've heard it mentioned in town meetings, it has been mentioned, it has been brought up, and I think anybody who has any, any perspective on the matter would know it has been expressed as a concern. I, I grant, grant what Mr. Germain says, that it would seem to apply that. I'm not certain of the exact definition of individual service connection. My houses would die a hundred feet from the street. You know, I may, I may receive a letter someday from the town to car for saying, hey, your water's all set, buddy, right down, right down your curb cut, you're all set. You know, end of the year, December 31st, it's been a little winter, I got to dig an eight foot trench out there at that time? I mean, you know, I'm, I'm trying to be reasonable here. I won't talk about water, I'm talking about curb cuts, or side limitations, or, you know, matters that are, that are perhaps less, less impactful to people. If I, just for example, I think things should hang on motion, but if I get a job offer in, maybe on Flint, Michigan, but in Michigan someplace, decide to pack up and move, I've got to sell my house, and this is hangover. It is all kinds of concerns. And so that's, I think, we got to get it right, I think it's our duty to get it right. And I think that with all the concerns that are expressed, and I think that with Mr. Shea's motion, and the intention he specified to his motion, what I've tried to add here, I think that we, what we want is something to protect and amplify what is there, so the intention of those who vote for the motion, the amendment motion, is made clear, that's all.
So basically, you're saying that you don't think that the amendment's necessary? Is that...
No, I'm, I'm saying if, if, if this is perceived to be probable to be amended, the intention is clear, is that correct? And I think that everybody understands the intention right now.
Yeah, I think, I think to Mr. Germain's point, the, the argument is, is that the motion, the original motion, as it's stated, provides for all the properties listed to get connected and have no betterment fees, you know, get connected for free and have no betterment fees. So one, one could argue that, that the, that the amendment is more restrictive, because you're putting a date of December 31st on.
That wasn't his original motion that was proposed, as it got revised, and it was, it's been, it's the motion on the floor right now, I'll correct that. And I certainly, I could read, including all costs associated with. And I'm not an attorney. I'm not an attorney. I've dealt with many attorneys, I have many attorneys I hold very high regard, and my personal attorney always says, if you've got a question, you don't like the way it's worded, ask. And there's, there's not a problem putting it in, it'll get put in. If there's a problem, maybe you find out a little more. So, and so to Mr. Shea's point, you know, and to what I'm going to say here, without taking the entire reading up, is just...
I've got to, I've got to ask you to wrap it up.
I'm trying to. If it's not a problem, if, if this is the intention, what do we need to do as, as taxpayers, as homeowners, as people affected by this problem that the town... as people affected by this problem that the town created, or the town allowed to happen? What do we need to do to achieve Mr. Shea's goal, of just making sure that that is codified when this amendment is out of the law?
All right, I got you.
Mr. Moderator, would you, as by way of further compromise, refer you to Mr. Shea, what if it said, "It is the town's intention that no betterment shall be charged and no hookup fee will be charged to any of the 19 properties that connect within one year of water service being available"?
I will not amend that because what's going to happen is, the Towne-Carver is paying for this water line, and it's going to transfer ownership over to the North Carver Water District to just provide their product. The North Carver Water District bylaw has the right to charge betterments. I don't think that anybody should be under any threat at any time for betterments from something that is being proposed that is required by the state.
Mr. Shea, we're going around in circles here now because-
No, no, this was new information because the Towne-Carver's funding this water pipe, it is going to transfer ownership of this water pipe over to a semi-autonomous government, the North Carver Water Department, which I believe Mr. Corbo has mentioned already. At that point, the North Carver Water Department, unless there's restrictions on it, can decide that we need some money to pay for the stuff. Therefore, we're going to hit people up with better, whether it's the intention or not. I am asking for nothing but a little bit of ink to ensure my peace of mind and my future. It's not much. Mr. Jermaine said this is the intent, it's been said over and over in the intent, so it shouldn't be an issue. It was actually voted on three years ago and agreed to. So why, what's changed in the past three years that makes this a problem now?
I think that the issue is that you're making it sound like you want it into perpetuity, and that this article does not say that it's going to be, that these funds will be available into perpetuity.
Well, no, I'm not, you put a timeline on it.
But that's more restrictive than what Mr. Corbo is suggesting. So Mr. Corbo is suggesting right now that we say one year from the time that the water line is constructed, is that it? So now-
Hookup fees, that's fine, but not for betterments. There should be no betterments. Do you know what a betterment on a water line is? It's like $23,000.
Did we strike the language on betterment?
$35,000. That's what a betterment is.
So your amendment, the amendment that Mr. Corbo was recommending at this point is reaffirming that there will be no betterments or hookups charged to any of the 19 properties that connect to the new water line prior to the end, I'm sorry.
There should be a period after.
Yeah, within one year after water service being available. So I think that that's the best that we can do. We can't-
We've done it before, there's no reason.
We can't, we can't tell, we can't charge betterments without a vote on meeting, right?
That's not true. The North Carver Water Department is a semi-autonomous government in and of itself and can charge betterments.
So that also means that we can't control them if they're semi-autonomous?
That's not true. We're building it, we're transferring it to it, it goes with the same as the deed of your house. If you change the deed of your house, when you sell it to somebody new, the stay-in restrictions apply.
So if you're saying that we can't tell them what to do today, then in the same breath, then we should be able to vote at a future Town Meeting whether or not to have betterments?
If you want to come back and do, and change what this is, good luck with that. It's hard enough getting this thing passed, forget coming back and changing it in the future. If you think you're going to get a town to come back and start hitting people up for $35,000 for something that's required by the state to do, then you're asking for a shell game. If it's a problem, then let the Attorney General set it out. No betterment, that's all I'm asking. $35,000, that's an insane amount of money for any homeowner on the street. Anybody in town, don't think it can affect you. This plume isn't just sitting there swirling around in a circle.
Okay, Mr. Shea, I completely understand, I hear you. I just don't, I don't think that we're going to solve this tonight if the main motion on the table is to vote to appropriate funds to construct this water line and hook up 19 properties. It does not include anything about hampering future Town Meetings or-
Nor am I trying to do so. I am asking for the words, which is the stated intention of this project. No betterments, no hookup fees for, while the project's ongoing, or until the end of the calendar year, as Mr. Corbo put it.
Okay, yeah, that's what we have, though, so I'm under-
That's fine, I did, somebody came back, are putting a comment in there. No betterment says a period after, it's not an and or or.
We're in agreement then.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to just move the question because we've really beaten this one dead. So let's get this amendment out of the way. You guys have heard from various different points of view, you've heard legal point of view on this. The motion is to amend and add the words, "No betterment shall be charged and no hookup fees will be charged to any of the 19 properties that connect to the new water line within one year of water service being available." All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries by majority vote. So back to the main motion. The main motion is the Plymouth Street Water Line Extension. This is to appropriate the funds. You've already heard the motion, we can now open that for discussion? On the right, sir, I'm sorry, I didn't know who was up first, but, okay. On the right, sir?
I, Mike Palmary, 164 Plymouth Street. Seems we've already been round and round and round and round about this, you know, the betterment and all that. At the very least, I'm going to talk as a mechanic that knows something about water systems. At the very least, run the pipe off the street from the curb stock into the house, put a meter fit up. The Water Department doesn't have to put a meter in yet if people choose not to have the water done. Also, from what I heard in the last debate, right now, the North Harbor Water District, I heard it in, well, sitting in on a Zoom meeting in March, has nothing to do with this project, other than making sure the right materials are used and that the system is put in per their design, their engineering parameters and guidelines. They don't own this project. So you put the meter fit up in people's houses, and if they choose not to go get it now, at least you got it that far. So if this does rear its ugly head in two years, three years, or five years, you've done the hard work, you've put the darn valve in the house. It's not that hard, folks, it really isn't, if you think about it, okay? We're just beating this thing to death, we've been doing it for four years. Enough is enough, get everything in that you possibly can to get people that want the water, get it to them. Make it easy in the future to give them water if they don't want it now.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. On the left, sir?
Yes, Chuck Marra, 93 Tremont Streets. Just clarification, if the town connects to water, you mentioned about capping the well, why can't they have both? They have a generator, why lose electricity? Why can't they have a backup well? The town well fails to contend. That's the part that bothered me, on the, have to disconnect my well if I have town water. I'm thinking of the future here. Any answers?
Anybody want to address that?
The answer is, you're absolutely correct.
Speaking to the microphone, you're very loud, but speaking to the microphone.
It's absolutely wrong. You want to have a well, and you want to have a water line, you should be able to have both. I was told that DEP's requirement is because the wells are contaminated, so therefore you cannot let the well be anything other than non-podable, so you could use irrigation, all right, until you don't like your first water bill. Then we shut that water off, and we go back to the well line. It doesn't negate the fact that we have a contaminated well. It all has to do with the contamination. In a perfect world, you could have three wells, and you could have town water, but because of the contamination levels, those that hook up, and I didn't think it was right, but this is what I was told, the wells have to be decommissioned.
Thank you, Mr. Tink.
You want to go on?
Well, that's my understanding, but I would say that's a technical question between the Board of Health and DEP that certainly can't be entered tonight.
Yep. And, Mr. Jermaine, just so you know, we asked you to speak in the mic just because we have, we're broadcasting this, we're recording it, whatever, so like, in the broadcast and the recording, we won't hear you if you're not in the mic. We all hear you, we hear you, that's for sure. I believe I had on the right, no, I just want to caution people to try to keep the, bless you, sir. I want to caution people to try to keep the conversation to the motion at hand. We're talking about whether, at this point, whether or not to appropriate the funds. We've dispensed with the amendment and debated that quite a bit. So at this point, if your conversation has to do with whether or not we should allocate these funds, then I think you're on the right track here. But if it's something other technical with regards to how this project is going to be carried out, that's not within scope of this article. Mr. Bell?
Just FYI, two things. First one is, a resident had a well in the contaminated area. He was using it for irrigating his garden, thus that contamination was getting into his garden and the vegetables. DEP made him cap that off. Just a little, number one. Number two, because we're under 10,000 servicing, this is what I said, October 1st, 2021 is when we have to test for PFAS 6. I got it on the state website. Just want to clarify, that's what it says, under 10,000 servicing, that's when we have to-
Okay, thank you for clarifying, Mr. Bell. All right. We're going to put this to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The article carries unanimously, yeah, motion carries unanimously, Article 8, Plymouth Street Water Line Extension. Thank you, everyone, for your patience on that. Number nine, permitting authority bylaw. We have a motion?
I move that the town approve Article 9 as set forth in the warrant.
A motion to second on Article 9 for the permitting authority bylaw. I have a vote on this of five yes, zero no on the select board. And I believe that Ms. Hewens has a few words on this.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So the intent of this proposed bylaw is to, as it says in informational summary, is to remove any perceived non-financial conflict of interest among board and commission members. It started out in a different form where it said that people couldn't, an appointing authority couldn't appoint, you know, one person to more than one permitting authority board. It got kind of too confusing. The real issue is here, we just don't want it to look like there's non-financial conflicts. The bylaw still allows any individual to be on a permitting authority and on lots of different other kinds of committees and boards, as long as they are also not permitting authorities.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. We'll go ahead and open this up for debate. Yes, sir, on the right.
Jason Green, 11 main. Just to clarify, bylaw changes, should they be two-thirds, not majority?
That's zoning bylaw change would be two-thirds.
My fault, thank you.
Okay, so seeing no further motion to the mics and no hands raised, we're going to put this to a vote, and as we just mentioned, it's a majority vote required to pass this one. So on Article 9 permitting authority bylaw, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, the motion carries a majority vote. Article 10, select board bylaw change, we have a motion?
I move that the town approve Article 10 as set forth in the warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Moderator?
We have a point of order?
I move to amend the motion made under Article 10 by deleting paragraph A, so the town administrator will remain the appointing authority for the inspector of wires.
Okay, so we have an amendment on the table to strike item A, which says amend section 2.4 as follows, select board shall appoint an inspector of wires. Do we have that in writing?
I believe you have.
Oh, that's right, it's in the table, gotcha. So we'll open that for debate?
Mr. Moderator?
Oh, we didn't get a second on that, sorry.
I'll second it.
Right, motion's been made and seconded, we'll open it for debate?
Mr. Moderator, I may. So the reason that we're modifying this again, putting town administrator back in there as inspector of wires, is because to do otherwise would contradict the law. Right, thank you. The town administrator legislated the act that was passed many years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. Seeing no further motion to the mics and no hands raised, we'll go ahead and put the amendment to strike paragraph A up to a vote. Mr. Corvo, it's a majority vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the amendment passes unanimously. Back to the main motion, select board bylaw change, and this would now include everything except for paragraph A. So do we have any debate on this item? Yes, sir, in the middle, Mr. Holmes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Holmes, 13 Rintail. I just want to be clear on the intent of the select board to serve on other boards and committees. This has been a, you know, a discussion as it relates to other bylaws and other boards and committees in town, capital L, finance committee, et cetera. But the way I read section B 2.2.8 is that members of the select board are permitted to serve on other boards and committees in town. As long as it's not, the zoning board of appeals, the conservation commission, or the earth removal committee, and historic commission, is that correct?
Mr. Moderator, yes. In other words, this is meant to go with Article 9, so that if you, because the select board issues permits, we cannot be members of other permitting authorities. So it's just reinforcing the one we just approved.
But just to be clear, that means the select board can serve on other boards and committees in this town, even though they have budgets, even though they have authority to make decisions as a member of the select board, and therefore authority to make decisions as members of other boards and committees? Because that's been a contested issue as it relates to the finance committee bylaw, and yet we're not restricting the select board to the same set of parameters or restrictions, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. - I'll have to defer to the Town Council on that.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So my understanding, based on the way that this will be written if it passes, is that once you become a member of the select board, you cannot hold an elected or compensated position, and you cannot hold an appointed position that issues licenses or permits. But you could serve on some sort of advisory board that is not elected, is not compensated, does not issue licenses or permits.
Mr. Holmes?
Yeah, just, so just as for instance, you could serve on the library trustees, you could serve on the recreation committee, you could serve on other boards and committees that have budgets and have the authority to control finances within the town.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, yes, it would appear that way.
Yeah, okay, it just, okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Yep, on the right?
Hi, Jennifer Pratt, 38 miles, Standish Drive. On part C, I just wanted to get a point of clarification. So there was a contested race, and somebody lost, and then an opening came that needed an appointment. Is this saying that the board would not be able to appoint another person who had been interested because they weren't elected? I just, if someone could clarify this for me, yeah?
Yes, Ms. Hewens?
If I may, so this is, this section C is to state that we will avoid appointing anyone to a position who ran for but was not elected to that position. So if there's one seat, two people ran, the first person wins, we can't appoint the second person then to, as an alternate, for example. That's the intent behind this, within one year prior to the date of the appointment. So a certain amount of time has elapsed.
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. Mr. Bell?
Yeah, this, just to give you a heads up, there was a position where we had two positions and three applicants. and three applicants. One person applied for one position, another one applied for the other position. They all came before the board to get appointed. One person had lost the election, but he was given a position that he didn't even apply for, where he shouldn't even have been there, because our bylaw is prohibited, but he still happened. This is putting it out here again, saying, hey, listen, you didn't pass the election, that's fine, try it again, okay? But we can't appoint you, because if we have somebody else that wants that position, they're volunteering for it, then we should give that person that opportunity, to be fair.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Mr. Germaine?
It seems to be very convenient, the select board, to have the audacity to bring forward a motion like this, when there was a big to-do in an argument over the following article, which is being withdrawn tonight, because I didn't want to start a floor fight. They want the FinCom members to only be able to sit on the FinCom. And all we are is advisory people. We can't write a check, we can't order that one be written, we have no legislative authority, we can't do anything other than advise. Yet this board of five people want to pick and choose where they can sit, and they can in fact sit on the finance committee, and then turn down a finance committee request because they have that authority.
Mr. Belvin, Mr. Germaine, try to keep your conversation focused on, on the factual information.
Yeah, I'm keeping it focused exactly where it needs to be, Mr. Moderator.
Yep. We're not going to make accusations about-
We're not making accusations.
Intentions are.
Tell them what the entire board can do, not an individual of that board.
Right, so that's fine, you can state what you believe a board can do-
That is what I believe.
-do, but I would-
Can I finish?
I would, no, because I have a floor and I'm the moderator, but I would not, I would refrain from making any statements about their intentions behind the article, okay? Because that is not anything that we can prove here.
But it was okay for us to get beat up by the select board with their intentions toward the finance committee, but that's another discussion for another day. Fact is, the select board should serve as the select board only. They are the final authority in this town. They are the executive body of this town. Every other committee, appointed committee that is not a permitting agency, or which FinCom is not, has no power. FinCom has no authority whatsoever. This gives the select board way too much control.
Thanks, Mr. Germaine. On the right.
Ben Dexter, 149 High Street. I just, as a matter of good governance, I have an issue with section C, and I would urge my fellow town meeting members not to vote for it. I just think because you happen to lose an election, you shouldn't be presumed that the town doesn't want you for the next year that you're there. To me, it's just, hey, you just didn't meet the bar as the first person who ran and won. And especially, you know, people who run for these positions don't do so unless they're interested for it, so wouldn't you want people interested in the position to be able to be appointed to that agency? It just doesn't seem to need to be good governance.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Seeing no further motion to the mics, no raise of hands, we'll go ahead and move the motion. So on Article 10, the select by, select board bylaw change, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. That was kind of tough. We're going to go ahead and put this to a hand count.
Mr. Moderator, point of order?
Yes.
Can we get a count of the actual people that are here?
Yeah.
That way we know exactly how many people are here to vote. That would be the next, we would still be able to vote, even if we didn't have a forum, we would still be allowed to complete this one question.
Sure. So as of 8:15, we had 90 people in the room.
I don't think we have 90 now.
Yeah, I mean, aside from us counting everybody in the room. Well, I think that's what we should do, Mr. Moderator. No comment?
Mr. Moderator, through you, attendee does have the authority to request a count of the quorum. However, you should be cautioned that if there is a count of how many people are here and there is not a quorum, then the meeting cannot take any further action.
Yep. Agreed. So Mr. Belvin has brought into question the number of people in the room, which we are going to associate with basically a point of no quorum. So we're going to honor it, okay? So with that said, we're going to, oops, sorry. So with that said, we use the counters to count the number of people in the room. Okay. So let's go ahead and do that. So I would ask everyone to hold your yellow card up in the air, and we will count the
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, yep. If you have a voting card and you're sitting in the rear left section back here, you need to come down to the front seats. These folks are okay, this is a voter section. Only this box back here is a non-voter section. So anybody with a yellow card who's sitting in the back corner here is in a non-voter section, so you need to come down and sit in the lower seats. All right, counters, we still need you over here, because we've got to tell you what to count. Come here. Counters, please.
Everybody over here.
Counters, we need you up front, please. We're going to, we're going to make it clear which sections you're going to count.
He was in the bathroom.
He went to the volleyball.
So we still have a quorum. Yay. You can say yay.
Yay.
All right. We have 85 people, okay? So on the Article 10, we're voting now, so there's no debate. If it's a point of order, otherwise, we're already, we're already voting.
How does this vote it off?
We are going to a hand count.
No. How does the select board-
Oh, okay. Yep, so, yep, just say point of order, okay?
Okay.
The select board-
That's weird.
Yeah, that's probably not accurate, so hold on one moment here. Select board voted five, zero. Five yes, zero no. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to put this to a hand count. So first, we're going to ask for all those opposed to raise their yellow, or sorry, for all those in favor to raise their yellow card, and we'll count all those votes. And then we're going to ask for all those opposed to raise their yellow card, and we'll count all those votes, okay? So starting with all those in favor of Article 10, select board bylaw change, please raise your yellow cards. And then, counters, please count the exact same sections that you just counted before. And again, counters, please bring your numbers forward, and we'll total them up here, okay? We've got 27 votes in favor, and now all those opposed? Okay, counters, again, same section. Okay, counters, again, same section? Okay. Thank you, everyone. So, we had seventy-four nay, so, again, repeat the vote count. We had twenty-seven yay, seventy-four nay, so the motion does not carry. Oh, no, I'm sorry, forty-seven. Sorry, it's been a long night for me as well. I appreciate you... Yeah, I appreciate you keeping me on. That was the intent, that was the whole point of the whole thing, right? Twenty-seven for and forty-seven against. We've got a point of order, yes, sir? Say again?
It's only seventy-one votes.
Seventy-four votes, yeah, but not everybody is required to vote. Does that satisfy your point of order, or are you still...
Okay.
Yep, okay.
I just want to make sure the quorum count was correct.
Yeah, I mean, we did account, we had eighty-five people in the room, and seventy-four voted, so...